Okay, so it's seven o'clock, so we'll call the meeting of the Great Barrier and Planning Board's order. Thursday, August 11th pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. And the governor's July 16th, 2022 revised order extending remote participation by all members of any meeting of a public body. This meeting of the planning board will be conducted by remote participation to the greatest extent possible. Specific information and the general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public and or parties with a right and a requirement to attend this meeting can be found at the town's website. For this meeting, members of public who wish to listen to the meeting may do so by following the instructions on the agenda. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that public can adequately access the proceedings in real time by a technological means. In addition, per section 241-1 of the town code, except for procedural and housekeeping matters, town residents shall have the right to address a board on any item that requires a vote. At a time before a board votes on that item, such residents will be allowed as much time as the proponents of an item is permitted to have. And generally, the way we're handling that, just for members of the public who are participating, is that Chris and I keep an eye on who is raising hands. In, in the attendees list on the Zoom call, so we do try and keep an eye on that. We'll start with a roll call attendance. Jonathan Hankin.
I am here.
Thank you. Pedro Pachano.
I'm here.
Malcolm Fick.
Here.
Jeremy Ega.
Here.
Randy Nelson, I am here also. Thanks, guys. So Chris has got this meeting recorded and will get underway. Do we have any Form As that have sprouted up in the last couple of days, Chris?
No.
Seeing no Form As, we'll move on to minutes for the meeting of July 28th. Do we have a motion to approve as amended?
No move.
Thank you, Jonathan.
Second.
Second by Malcolm. Thank you, Malcolm. If we have any discussion? No discussion on the minutes. Jonathan, your vote is? Pedro, what's your vote?
Hi.
Malcolm, what's your vote?
Hi.
Jeremy, what's your vote?
Hi.
And my vote is I also. All right, so bulk of our meeting tonight is on item number three zoning strategies to increase housing opportunities. We had a couple of items that we discussed at the last meeting, so. Chris, did you want to lead us off in there? I know you had emailed us a couple of different things and then Malcolm had also emailed us one thing. Earlier this week.
I emailed it to you and Chris.
Oh, it didn't go to the whole group. Okay.
Or did I not send that out?
I didn't see it.
Even though I said I would broadcast.
Well, I got it to you late, so.
Sorry about that. Sure, Brandy. So I sent to the board on Monday afternoon, a draft of a few zoning amendments to consider. These are my. Redline drafts for you to begin discussion. Well, actually, to continue your discussion, to give some frame and some content to your discussion from the last meeting. Where we talked about. Treating three family residential units in much the same way as we treat single and two-family units in terms of where they're permitted. And we also discussed reviewing the site plan criteria and where site plan review is used. And maybe where that review process, that process of submitting a full application, waiting a few weeks, going through this board in order to go to a building permit. Where that process could be reduced and or eliminated. To make the process of getting permits for accessory dwelling units, two-family uses and three-family uses a little bit. Smoother, a little bit faster, a little bit more predictable. So in front of you tonight, which I'll share on screen. And folks in the audience, I can share with you. Soon as possible after the meeting. I'll share on screen the zoning. And Malcolm sent to Brandy and I his thoughts about how to quantify the six site plan review criteria in section 10.5. Point. Section 10.5.5, right?
Yeah.
So those criteria, we had a brief discussion last time about how they could be quantified so that somebody sitting in my position could check a box. This, this item is, has been thought about and the plan to address this is submitted. And it's a straightforward, they've met a criteria. Or maybe they haven't met a criteria and they do need to come for a board meeting. So that was Malcolm's framework. I'm sorry I didn't get it out to you all, but we can talk about that. You know, a little bit tonight and the next meeting as well. So let's start with the zoning, if you want. I'll put it on screen, Brandy.
Yep, that'd be great. Thank you. And a lot of times Jonathan will dive into this and start sending edits. Jonathan, did you, did you do that in this instance? A lot of what has changed is just the table of uses and then aligning the definitions and.
I didn't, I have comments to make, but I didn't, I didn't send them to anybody.
Okay. Are they substantive comments or are they like edits? Like there should be a the here and a with there?
It's a combination.
You want to focus on the substantive ones?
Well, why don't I?
Why don't we just go through it?
Okay.
Yeah, I'll give a quick overview. So the focus, as I said, was on single, two and three-family dwellings. The first thing I did was change the word family to unit, since the definition of families is changing so much. Who lives in a household is not necessarily a family, et cetera. So it's either a single-unit dwelling, a two-unit dwelling, or a three-unit dwelling. So that's the red line you'll see throughout there. But to get to the part of the matter, what this table in front of you does is it takes three. It's tough to get used to. Three-unit dwellings out of row 3A. And deletes it from there and moves it up. To row two. So it's, it's in there and regulated. In terms of use permissions in the same way as two-unit dwellings are. So it's a yes across the board. Rather than under three, it was mostly special permit with a few yeses and a couple no's. So three, you couldn't do a three-unit dwelling without a special permit in most cases or. Some cases it's prohibited. So in this proposal, it would be allowed in each district. Now, the super script two, that footnote two. I have highlighted the bottom in pink dimensional and last size requirements and other conditions I set forth in 8.11 and 8.14 shall apply even where the use is permitted by right. That seems just like a superfluous statement. Of course, you have to meet the requirements. Saying it again with a footnote seems superfluous, so I just. Flag that, thought it could come out.
I agree.
So this is the general idea with the use permissions. Just now, now each one, I see your hand, Jonathan. I just want to give a quick overview. The other pages here are the definitions. So we're striking family and just making it unit. Change to the definition of dwelling unit. Since we're no longer talking about families, we're talking about structure. Now. The use table is buttressed, I guess you would say that, by section 8.1 and 8.2 in particular regarding two families, two-unit dwellings and accessory dwelling units. There are requirements in here that talk about site plan review and, and other standards that need to be met. So I took. A red pen to section 8.1 as well. I added three units into here so that we could regulate them together and similarly. And 8.2, I also took the red pen to and made some suggestions there. Multi-family dwellings, we used, we used to call multi-family, we will now call multi-unit. And multi-family used to include three units. We're not doing that anymore. Three units are being considered with two units. Multi-family now is four units and up. And in accordance with the definition changes we saw up. And then finally, if we do strike some of the requirements to go in front of this planning board for site plan approval. The thought is maybe we should buttress 6.4 and add some more. Performance standards, design criteria, and here, these are things that this board often talks about when it's reviewing. A site plan application, when it's reviewing its criteria 10.5.5, it's talking about runoff and. Lighting and trees and, and things like that. So I've added some things in here that you might want to consider. So these. If included in this section, would apply. To all uses, not just the two-unit and three-unit items we're talking about, but we're talking about all uses permitted through zoning. Residential. Industrial or commercial. So everybody needs to play by the lighting rules, which are dark sky compliant, you know, LED Kelvin temperature, et cetera. So that's the overview of what's in front of the board tonight. Jonathan, let's get back to you and. See where you want to take us.
We go to 8.1. Point. Point five.
The drainage controls?
Yeah.
Okay.
It says drainage improvements may be required as a condition of the site plan review approval. We have enough site plan review approval.
Right, so maybe this.
And in Chris's footnote, he says, you know, maybe we move it over to performance standards.
Well, I don't think we should reference, since we're taking site plan review out of here. We shouldn't be referencing site plan review.
Right, at least delete that last sentence.
Yeah, delete the last sentence. And delete number six as well.
Right. Yeah, that was my note. I don't know if you could see my marginal notes, John.
They didn't show up in what I printed.
Oh, okay. Well, that's, that's. Yeah, it was already going that way. Not sure we need that clause.
Okay, then under 8.2 point. Wait, 8.1.4. We should strike that whole sentence, that whole.
Yeah, I agree. It would no longer.
And. 8.2.2.9. I don't know why that's in there. Since they have to do that anyway.
Right.
Just seems superfluous.
All I did was take it out of 822 above here. And I thought I should put it someplace, but I think you're right. We probably don't need it at all. Think it is superfluous.
And. 6.4.5.
Lighting?
Lighting, yeah, 6.4.5. Oh, yeah, the first sentence on the second page.
Yeah.
Whether new or replacement.
Oh, yeah, sure.
Okay, those are my comments.
Okay. What were your thoughts of the approach of rule?
I like it.
Cool. Great.
All right. Pedro, anything from you?
Yeah, I mean, I just will add that I think there wasn't a single note that Chris put on here that I didn't agree with. One thing I think would be helpful and I would like to consider is that in the bylaw, both 8.1.2 and 8.3.4. They reference. Yes. I don't want to say additional, but they're kind of superfluous in a way. Site plan approval requirements that I would like to just see. Handled in the site plan approval section of the bylaw. And as, as far as the two and three-family residential review. 8.1.2 specifies that we need to see floor plans. And I'm, I'm wondering why we need to see floor plans if it's strictly a site plan approval, why floor plans are irrelevant. Somebody can.
I'm not following you. We're, we're 8.1.2, is that what you said, Pedro? I'm sorry, I was just trying to pull it up.
8.1.2, it just says. Every application for site plan approval shall be accompanied by site plans, floor plans and elevations. I get the site plan and the elevations, but the floor plans, I'm not sure why we need to be reviewing floor plans.
Chris is suggesting that that be struck. Can you see what's on screen?
I am suggesting it be struck. I think the reason that the requirement has been in there is because a floor plan. Can be instructive to the board showing how the, how people will be coming and going into and, and. Using the unit and the adjacent spaces outside, including parking and walkways, maybe. So maybe that's why. A floor plan, you know, where, where is the mudroom versus the kitchen and the dumpster? I don't know. That's all I can.
But don't we get that information from a site plan, you know, showing the front door, side doors?
I thought the reason, Chris, was because we were trying to ascertain conclusively that each unit had a separate kitchen and bathroom. I thought that's why we had the floor plan provision in there.
We may have all used the floor plan requirement for different.
It could be, but yeah, I mean, I think Pedro, you're right that, you know, a site plan should show where the EGR stores are. But I think the floor plan shows where, allows you to confirm that there's a separate kitchen and bathroom space, which is one of the criteria, right?
Inside plant review? It was one of the criteria here under 8.1.
One.
Point three, which I think doesn't, wouldn't need to be stated if you agree with my new definition of dwelling.
Right. Which is a structure containing under one roof and within exterior budding walls, one or more rooms, including room or rooms for living, sleeping, cooking and sanitation.
I don't know. All, if, basically all of these things highlighted and pink on the screen under 8.1 new two. Could probably be eliminated except for the parking requirement. Unless you want to put parking requirements into section six parking requirements.
They're already there. I mean, I guess we're a little different. I'm all for it. I mean, I think, again, the checking whether or not it's two-family or real units or whatever. I mean, I understand that it's in the language of the bylaw, but it's something that I think the building inspector could easily confirm as well. And then 8.3, again, it's, I just would like to see this criteria all in one place. You know, if I'm looking, if, if I'm not from here and I come to the zoning bylaw and I see site plan review, I'm going to do what's on site plan review. I'm not sure that site plan review anywhere. I didn't see, I could have missed it. Specifies additional things like floor plans.
Right, so either added to, either added there or.
So I feel like there's some confusion, though. We're suggesting that we strike the site plan review provision.
Okay.
Yeah.
No, that's fine with me. That's what they want.
Okay, we're all in agreement then.
Okay, we're not all in agreement.
Well, hang on, Malcolm. So far, we're all in agreement. Okay, go ahead, Malcolm.
I, you know, my approach actually is a little bit different and that is to take site plan review and identify those items in the site plan review. And the submittal requirements that may not be required based on the type of construction or the characteristics of the construction. And I'd rather do that rather than. Eliminate site plan review altogether for these, for these uses.
So we can put that on screen. I think it's relevant to this discussion. We can share it tonight.
Yeah, it's very preliminary and it's not meant to be a finished.
Yeah.
Approach, but it's meant to, to outline how this might.
I'll, I'll. Great. I'll, I'll pull it up on screen, Brandy, when you're ready, Malcolm's proposal. And so if, if.
So can we parking lot that for just a few minutes?
Yeah. If we, if we take Malcolm's approach and refine that, then. Instead of eliminating this section 8.1.2 that says site plan approval required, it would say site plan approval required if you don't. Meet the standards. Yeah. See thresholds or whatever. Yeah. Yeah.
Malcolm, did you have any comments on the red lines that?
No, I actually like the approach. I like the combining the two and three units. I think, I, I, I think this, this is a good, good way to go.
Yeah, it seems pretty straightforward. Jeremy, how about you? Did you have any comments on the, the text proposal that Chris has put in front of us?
No, I don't. I'm also. A fan.
Chris, I think you nailed it.
Well.
You get a 10.
I, I should have. We, we've talked about it a lot. So let me find Malcolm's email.
So, so then I guess the que, so if, if everyone's good with sort of the, the approach, I think then the question is to what extent is site plan approval. Either eliminated or diminished. And I think to further that discussion, it'd be helpful to look at what Malcolm had prepared. And just for the benefit of the participants who maybe were on last, last meeting's call. We talked about, in some instances, we see three-family properties that are maybe an old Victorian that has three units in it. And, you know, there's no change in the footprint of a building. There's no change in grading. There is no change in utilities. It's just. An interior conversion. And so do they really need to go through a site plan approval process? So Malcolm was gonna. Do a little homework for us. Thank you, Malcolm. And just see if there was a way we could. Give it more of a sort of a checklist approach and try and reduce the burden on, on an applicant. If they were making very minimal changes to the property while still trying to make sure our site plan protective issues were addressed.
So I'll share that, Malcolm. Maybe you could walk it through, walk us through.
I mean, the concept here, what I did is took the site can approval criteria and broke it down into the, the components. And identified. And again, this is, I'm not proposing this as a finished document, but really just a, a way to organize thoughts. But we would skip review if. Criteria met, if all the criteria met, there would be no site plan review required at all. And if there is a site plan review required, then cut down on the level and maybe formality of what needs to be submitted based on what we're actually evaluating. So that's what that column that says the 10.5.3.1 submittal requirements. It runs into a little bit of difficulty when we get down into, actually the part that's off the page down a little below. I mean, of course, 10.5.5.6, you know, how do you establish objective criteria for meeting unreasonable departure from the neighborhood? Also, the, the, the big catch is the ensuring compliance with other zoning bylaws. Which opens up the entire book for site plan review. So that, you know, we are reviewing, you know, the uses and things like that. I would also point out, one of the, one of the things about relying too much to the building inspector to approve the bylaws is the. The use of the words minimize and maximize in the site plan review. And I think that's, that's specifically where we come in applied. But basically, I just want to point out, this is, I, I just put this together as a. As, as a thought on how we might view a checklist of what would be. Waived in terms of site plan review. I don't even know if we need a zoning bylaw for this, by the way. Because there already is a provision for waiving site plan review in the bylaw. So maybe we could adopt something like this for how we would waive or under what circumstances we might waive site plan review. And it doesn't necessarily have to apply only to 8.1, 8.2 or 8.3. It can apply to any developments.
Which, you know, I think. A good example of that, Malcolm, would be if a existing retail use becomes a different retail use, we don't see that, right? It doesn't come to us, even if the owner does some sort of, or the new tenant does some sort of new interior fit up. And, you know, may have more foot traffic or draw more vehicle traffic. So I think, you know, there's already a precedent for, for that in the way the town operates.
What are the lower, what are the lowercase letters?
Those are the sections in 10.5.3.1. So if you looked at 10.5.3.1, one requires a site plan, one requires, you know, a parking diagram, one requires landscaping diagram. So on, let's just make this appropriate to where, to what people are actually doing.
If they're not changing the landscape on the site, they don't need a landscaping plan, right?
Okay. So if they're not adding any exterior lights, they don't need a lighting plan. You know, if they, if they're not changing the footprint or changing any of the site, why would they need to. You know, to put, to submit a site plan.
But for example, under 10.5.5.2 with pedestrian and vehicular safety, if there's going to be changes in the configuration of the parking court. You, you've cross-checked it against the site plan submittal requirements and you've suggested A, B, E, F and G still be submitted, right? So it's a reduced burden?
Yes.
Okay. Does that make sense, Jonathan?
And we might under circumstances reduce or eliminate when a licensed practitioner is required to prepare these documents. I mean, we've accepted for site plan review from the fairgrounds, for example, handwritten drawings. Even though the bylaws require a licensed practitioner signing the, the submittal. So I think we should clarify that as well.
And I'll just clarify something else. So we don't misunderstand what Malcolm, Malcolm said earlier that site plan review be waived. In certain circumstances. If, if site plan review is required somewhere in the bylaw. For example, if section 8.2 says site plan review is required, then it's required. There are certain submittal requirements that can be waived by the board or can be waived by the bylaw, I suppose. But you'd still have to go through site plan review and come before this board and get an approval. So just, just to be clear.
Okay, let me, I, I must, might have misunderstood that, but.
Or just. Yeah, so if, if we require it for certain uses, then. They've got a.
That's right. It's just submittal requirements that can be.
Right.
So, so are you suggesting, Chris, and I appreciate that clarification, that we should maybe just do a cross-check on where site plan review is listed in, in. In the zoning bylaw and identify if that is still relevant, given the intent of this?
Yes.
There may be more sections that need to be amended.
I think that's one exercise. Go through the bylaw and see where site plan review is warranted, is effective. Or is overly burdensome? If it's effective, keep it. If it's overly burdensome with no effect, with no positive effect for review, then get rid of it. Either within section 10.5 site plan review or. Probably within 10.5 or somewhere else in the bylaw. It would say. Site planner review does not apply if there's no cotton fill, if there's no removal. So there'd have to be a way to. You know, unlock that door and let people walk through it, you know, don't, you know, do not pass go or whatever.
No, I appreciate that.
There's gotta be a, a specific, either stop sign or a go sign within the regulations. We can't just, no, wait it.
Yeah, no, I I think so. That's perfect that you suggest that because I was gonna ask that very question that we would probably need to amend the text of 10.5.1 applicability or. Something like that to to add a new qualifier.
I think so. Yeah.
Okay, all right.
Yeah.
Does that make sense to everyone?
Yeah, I'd like to know whether. The general this general approach makes sense.
The checklist approach?
Yeah.
I I think it does. I think we need to like read through it and. You know. But I I think where there's no change Malcolm, I think, you know, I agree with you. That's like a no brainer. And I would even suggest that. You know, that same criteria apply to character, materials and scale of building, right? Again, if you're not changing anything. We don't currently tell one household that they can't paint their, you know, house a certain color and. So so you know. If they're repairing windows and they're, you know, doing it generally in the the same. If they're putting a new window in. Yeah.
Putting a new siding on. We don't, we don't, we don't have anything to say in the materials.
What what does it, what does it mean all? Under.
All all are waived.
Oh, well, that's kind of intuitive from what I'm seeing. How do we know that?
No, that means they have to submit everything if they're if they're, you know, if they're if they're gonna be reviewed under 10.5.5.1. Again, I mean, I'm not defending the word all, but that's what it means.
So I think this is like an if then statement. So. You know, we probably want to set it up. So if there's no change in footprint, there's no submittal requirement. If there is a change in footprint, then all the submittal requirements in 10.5.3 are required.
And that may not be appropriate.
And and we should, we can clarify that.
But are you saying if there's no change, then you have to submit the whole?
No, you don't have to submit. You do not.
If there's no change, you don't have to submit at all. If you do have to submit it, then because there's a change, that's what you have to submit. So on 10.5.5.4. You know, if there's no change in the location as far as visibility of parking, storage or outdoor services. Then you don't have to go through this particular site plan review criteria. If you do, then you have to submit a ENF, which is the parking and the site plan.
I think this gives us a framework, Malcolm. I think we can tweak how columns are set up or how checklists are set up, but. You know, unless you can check the box and say there's no change in footprint, we should assume you have to make the submittal.
So can someone send that to us so that we can review it? Because. I understand only Chris and Brandy got it.
I just sent it out just now.
Yeah, I I I thought it was best to send it to Chris and Brandy to send out rather than to send it out myself, so. Under the deliberation rules.
So we're not making any decisions on it tonight. It's just for discussion purposes, but Malcolm, thank you for for getting us started. It'll give us something good to work with. In general, board, this seems consistent with what we talked about at the last meeting as far as trying to. Give. Sort of easy threshold criteria for determining whether site plan should be required. Do you guys feel like this approach is still valid? Jeremy, do you have any thoughts there?
Yeah, no, I I think it is. I mean, I do. I do have some questions about the subjective ones. And not from experience of how I've seen them used by this board. But just in how they could possibly be used. And so. Whenever that comes up, I know we've had discussions about character and I I've had some thoughts about that recently. And so I don't know if it necessarily pertains to this exercise, but.
That's the discussion we're gonna have to get into.
Yeah. We'll put this on the, I mean, this, we're gonna have this topic on the agenda for the next few meetings. So, you know, since only Chris and I received this and the rest of the board didn't get it, I think we're introducing it tonight. Malcolm's explained kind of the general approach to it. And. You know, everyone can take a look at it and we'll talk about it at the next meeting.
So but my basic concerns were, one, how they can be used as a way to. Like keep keep groups of people out and but then the other part is that just. Because they're so subjective that. Not just a way to keep people out, but maybe as a deterrent to. For people to go through the exercise to even, you know, and so those two things.
Sure. Yeah, and I think we want to. You know, I encourage it also think of it in terms of. Similar to what we have under the other sections. If there's no change, right? If it's all just interior renovations, then. You know, I I don't think there's any reason to. Say someone has to go through site plan review. For character. Hey, Joe, do you have any? Thoughts or comments on this approach?
I'd like to, you know, think about it. It's interesting. I'd like to, you know. Read through this thing and kind of think about it. I I was thinking. More along the lines of a performance standard approach and I. I had earlier in the week put together something and I just sent it to you guys because I just didn't send it out earlier, but. I don't know if we can review that or maybe we just wait till next.
Let's throw that into next time since nobody's looked at it yet, so.
So just, you know, what it does there is it it talks. It mentions the stop signs that Chris just talked about.
And and you suggest that's a approach to put under 6.4. Performance standards?
Yeah.
Okay.
I just added to what Chris. Suggested underneath the lighting section. I just added a site design section.
Okay.
A question, I mean, because a question just for Chris, and I'm wondering. If I'm right in my thinking about this. Part of the reason why I started this whole conversation about site plan review is because it dawned on me that. A person wanting to put an ADU on their property has to go through the same process as somebody wanting to build a 30 unit. Building, the same site plan review process. Am I wrong thinking that? Or is that? Yep, so that's. That's something we should all can, you know, I think you all need to be thinking about that as we go through this this process. Yep, very good point. So. Yeah, the bylaw right now, it doesn't really allow for for nuance. It's a site plan review and and you're all in. And the board reviews everything. Or it's not required. So in the case of the bylaws that currently stands, you have to do everything if you just want to put. An accessory dwelling unit or a second dwelling unit in the backyard, even though that unit would. Fit in the backyard, it would meet all the dimensional criteria and there's plenty of parking, you still need site plan review, go through all of this. All of these submittals. So.
Now I would add to that, as you as you mentioned, even if that's that second unit were to meet all the requirements. Let's say that second unit just adds. Results in a total. Livable square footage of, let's say, 4,000 square feet on a lot, we have no problem building a 4,000 square foot house. In fact, you don't have to show anybody except Ed May.
Right. Right. So a single family home with 4,000 square foot. We treat differently than two homes on the same lot that are each 2,000.
Right.
Yeah, so. So this approach would allow some nuance for different uses. So. Tweaking 10.5 and. Tweaking within the bylaw where a site plan review is required. And then tweaking 10.5 with site plan, how how the site plan review is applied. Is is one approach. Another approach that's sort of parallel, but sort of not, is to put it in 6.4 performance standards. The reason I say it's sort of not parallel is because. If it's in performance standards, it applies to everything, everything. If it's in site plan review, it only applies when you're dealing with site plan. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it does. And that's a good clarification for us to think about, but we can qualify performance standards too, right? We could say, under these circumstances, these performance standards apply and under these circumstances, other performance.
Yep. Yep.
Yeah, I like performance standards personally because I think they give a lot of certainty. You know, it's very much, it takes away like, you know. It it relies on Ed May, but it gives the the.
Buildings.
Or the builder, or excuse me, the building inspector, thank you. Yeah.
Not everybody knows who Ed is.
That's true. It gives building inspector, you know, he's he still has to be relied on, but. I think for someone who's looking at the code to do something within the code outside of just a conventional single family house, it gives a very clear. Criteria, right? It makes it very certain for everybody, which I think helps. Minimize cost.
Yeah, I like the approach too. And I like also that. You know, projects still have eyes on them and they have experts. And then expert in Chris's office and the experts in the building inspector's office, Chris, the town manager, assistant town manager. Director of community development.
Thanks.
Staff people.
And.
Oh, sorry.
No, and I was, I just wanted to say that, that, you know. The performance standard approach still gets reviewed and still has plenty of eyes on it. And and in my opinion, an excellent set of eyes.
Malcolm, you were raising your real hand.
Yeah, I I. I just agree. I mean, I if if we had objective performance standards for all of these things, we wouldn't need site plan review. But we don't. And we maybe we should strive toward that. Lighting is a perfect example where I specify, I have a footnote in here, we need a specific bylaw for it in order to waive it. You know, Chris is what Chris drafted, you know, as far as the performance standard for the. In 6.4 there was, I thought was appropriate and would would actually help us with site plan review. Even if we kept site plan review, it would help us having those performance standards.
Well, I between now and next meeting, if you all could could look at this and I just send it around, what, you know, and think about what does minimize volume of cotton film need? Is it a percentage basis? Is it? You can move, you know, 10 cubic yards, but. Not 11? You know, what what does it mean? I think there'll have to be some. Quantitative. Measure for most of these.
I'll try and dig through some of the communities I work with too and see if I can. Provide a few examples.
Yeah, folks look through it and give it some thought and then we can. Review again next time.
Okay.
Or if you send me your thoughts, I can try to compile them. Into one document for next time.
Just a footnote, my first performance standard is about cut film.
Is what?
Is about cut film.
All right, excellent. So item B on this agenda item is, oh no, we covered item A and B. So we've got. Site plan review discussion and regulations for three family residential uses. I think, Chris, you captured Jonathan's small edits live in the text, so.
Yeah.
If anybody sees anything else, just shoot those over to Chris. The other item under zoning was financial strategies and staff capacity. These were more. Strategies that were introduced to us a couple of meetings ago that we thought are not really in the purview of the planning board. But we wanted to provide some recommendation to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund and the select board to pursue some of those items. And so Chris has put together a draft letter for us. Chris, are you able to put that on the screen?
Sure.
And I guess if anybody's got edits there, if you want to raise your hand, I know you may have read through that and had some had some thoughts on. What it should, what else it should say, or could you say something a little bit differently?
I had a couple of edits in there.
Okay.
I don't know.
Chris is gonna pull it up.
I think I captured them, John, and I got your email. But you can look again.
So one, one thing that you didn't put in, which is the issue of the driveways. Which is strictly the select board. I think that the. Limitation on the number of driveways. Of curb cuts that the town has imposed is arbitrary. And. There is a way around it, but. It's not. It's not been determined how to how to get around it. So extraordinary circumstances or something to that effect.
So the limit is two curb cuts unless there's some. Extraordinary reason why it should have more.
Right.
You're saying that that is. Arbitrary and has no.
Well, I noticed that in the last one that came up before the select board, you didn't even mention that. Second clause. And basically they turned it down because of that. They didn't understand that they had. The power to waive that.
So are you suggesting, Jonathan, that we add a sentence or two that the select board evaluate the the provision for for. Curb cuts for residential uses? Is that?
I, well, I think we need to look at, I think we we need to look at it because that that is basically. A. Single family zoning. That supports that. Those curb cuts. And we've done, we've done away with that and. I think we need to address that.
I mean, I I think there may be a little bit more nuance in there. I don't think you're wrong in terms of how it originated, but I I don't think every. Lot can support multiple. Curb cuts. You know, there are generally. Guidelines for. Having a, you know, if you've got on street parking, you don't want to have curb cuts that are, you know. Back to back to back to back because you don't have any room for on street parking. There's there can be issues of traffic safety. So I mean, they're they're just, they may need to look at it and provide maybe more objective criteria about where more curb cuts would be appropriate.
I would think that that would be something we could review.
I'm not sure why it's in their purview, but.
Because it's access to the town road.
Okay.
At least we, if we come up with a review. And some criteria, for example, maybe there's more than two curb cuts, depending on the size of your lot. Depending on whether or not you have off street parking or something like that. If we come up with a set of criteria that maybe we can. Send to them to consider, I think maybe, you know, it'll be addressed at least.
Or, I mean, make it subject to review by the highway superintendent. You know, they're the ones who.
Well, it's already subject to that before it goes to the planning board. I mean, before it goes to the select board.
Right, but in terms of reviewing whether or not it should just be subject. Right? You know, if the if the. If the highway superintendent says three curb cuts are okay, then you know, the highway superintendent's looked at it, he knows, he or she knows the roads and the sightlines and that should be enough. But if the. Current text, and I can't remember what section text it is, Jonathan, I know you've been digging into this.
Well, it's in the town code, not in the zoning.
Code 153. But this is a an issue. So so generally, this letter contains thoughts and ideas that this board has previously discussed. This board has not really. Thought about the merits of more than two driveways. So I don't know if you want to put that idea on a future agenda and debate it. In order to include it in this letter, or if you want to just take this letter and tweak it and run with it. How do you want to see it, Brandon?
Um, I mean, personally, the driveway issue hasn't been in our purview and, you know, Jonathan's raised it. I I think it could be handled separately. That's my opinion. Happy to take other opinions, though.
Well, except you're sending a letter to the select board. Asking to address all of these issues. And.
We can send them a second letter.
It is an issue of affordable housing. And, you know, why you're afraid to put that in the letter, I don't understand.
I'm not afraid to put it in the letter. I'm just saying it's an issue you've gotten yourself. I'm not afraid to put it in the letter. I'm just saying it's an issue you've gotten yourself. Focused on and the rest of us haven't probably given it as much thought as you. And we can communicate multiple times with the select board. We should have regular communication with them. So I, I don't, I don't think this is like the only letter we can send them over the course of the year. I do think we want to get something in front of them sooner rather than later. Anybody else have an opinion on it?
Yeah, yeah, I, I. I, I agree that it's an issue. Um, I agree also, though, that, uh, we should. I think make a specific recommendation to the select board, not just send them, uh, tell them they should look into it. Um, so I.
Yeah, it'll get lost. I agree with Malcolm.
I, I, I would, I would prefer that we put it on our agenda to, uh, say, okay, what, what needs to be changed? Then send specific recommendations to the select board to do that.
I'll second that.
I think we're, we're not voting on it, but we can certainly put it on the agenda.
I think that was kind of like the song, I'll second that emotion.
That's right.
The, uh, uh, by the way, there, there was a news article about the city of Sedona in Arizona, uh, offering up to ten thousand dollars to. Um, Airbnb, uh, owners who swat, switch over to a long-term rental. So that's kind of like an example of what we included in that paragraph down there in the bottom of the screen here.
So if we go through these sections one by one, Chris, um, the, the first one being ADUs. Is this the, uh, like pre-approved ADUs approach? Is that what you're getting at here?
Correct.
Okay. And do. Do we think, uh, like, would we transmit this with the information that we got from BRPC or. Um, provide any additional supplemental information, attachments or anything like that?
Certainly.
Um, the second one.
Randy, what about, what about removing? The restriction about tenants in the short-term rental bylaw. That was just passed. Should we bring that up?
Removing the restriction on ten, the, like, the three months, nine months thing?
So.
Rental bylaw that was passed by town meeting prohibits a tenant from using their place as a short-term rental, even though they're living there. And which is basically saying, I've got enough money to buy a house, I can do what I want, but you don't, so you can't.
Right. So, so somebody who rents a house cannot short-term rent.
Subletting it basically on a short-term basis.
Yeah, partial or whole. Yeah, that's what the regulation has passed, doesn't allow.
Um, and Jonathan, in your opinion, how does that, how does that address affordable housing?
Well, I've got a tenant who often has to rent to help make her, her lease payment. And that was, you know, not that she did it all the time, but she would do it occasionally. And that was just taken away for no reason. Uh, by what was passed at town meeting.
And so your point is that should be more between the landlord and the, uh.
Absolutely.
And the tenant as opposed to.
Why is the town, why is the town. Discriminating against people who can't afford to buy a house?
Is that an enforceable provision, though?
Who knows?
Well, it doesn't, it doesn't matter, right? So if it's enforceable or not. It's, so then what you're saying is that people that follow the rules, tenants that follow the rules won't. Right? It seems.
Yeah, I'm just trying to get at what the, what the real issue is here.
It's for, I think, in a nutshell. If somebody is renting and they need an extra income stream, they are precluded from. Doing short-term rentals, is it for extra income?
Or. And it, and that should be a, that should be a landlord tenant issue, right? It shouldn't, like, does the town need to get involved in that?
It prohibited it.
No, 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 that's what I'm saying. Yeah.
Yeah. But the only way to make it that is to take it out. And so that's why we have to bring it to the, I raised it at the, at the subcommittee. And it was like, it just fell on deaf ears.
I agree with you, Jonathan, but I, I, I just think it's, uh, it should be viewed as an oversight in the, or a correction that needs to be made in the. Bylaw, short-term rental bylaw, um.
We're sending us, we're sending a shopping list. I think it should be on there.
But you should, I mean, you can frame it in the, you can frame it as an issue of affordable housing, right? And so, because if you're a tenant, right, it makes it more affordable.
Yeah.
Or if you have hardship.
Yeah.
Exactly. If you're, you know, and it allows you to maintain your lease. If there's some sort of hardship which prevents you from being able to cover it for a period of time.
Can, can we suss that out just a little bit more, though? Because how, how valid is that argument? You know, if you're going on vacation and your, your rental space becomes available. I wouldn't necessarily say that's a hardship. If you're experiencing a hardship, don't you want to be in your, in your home, like?
No, but you might, but you might be able to shack up with one of your friends or family for a short period of time, right?
Running a room.
Yeah.
Okay, I mean, I, I, I agree with this, but I, I also think this letter is, uh. I mean, there's like three big picture things on here, uh, for the.
Yeah, I wonder, I wonder if this is a separate, if this is a separate thing from this letter.
Um, it, yeah, I think amending the SDR is somewhat of a separate thing. Personally, and I, I don't disagree with the approach. I'm just thinking. You know, again, in terms of getting something in front of the select board sooner rather than later, you know. I'd like, I, I'm happy to send many communications to them. I, you know, I know we'd like it to be comprehensive, but I think we could meet. You know, every, every meeting for the next three months and add things to it. Um, this is a really creative thinking group, so, um, I don't want to delay it for three months while we think about more things we could add to the, to the list, so. Jonathan, I'm surprised that you haven't switched gears. Um, I'm surprised you didn't suggest adding the waiver of the sewer hookup fees.
Well, I've suggested it so many times.
You're not suggesting it again. I thought it.
There's only so much we can take.
I know. Uh, I thought it fit under that paragraph that begins since creating new housing from scratch. Uh, you know, I think that could be one of the things included in there with that paragraph, Chris, that wasn't too, too controversial. You know, those, those folks will be paying sewer use fees also. But in terms of affordable housing, if we could, if a unit is affordable, could we have a provision for waiving the hookup fee? Just to.
The paragraph is about existing, the sewer hookup fees, uh, talking about, are applying with new housing or, I think, change of uses. Is that right? Have to go back. So new developments or change of uses. Um, have to pay the sewer connection.
Wait.
So maybe a different paragraph.
Okay. Well, I don't want to go against my own suggestion that we keep adding paragraphs, you know, in, in light of getting this out the door. I was hoping we could move on this, this evening. Uh, but if we're going to be doing multiple edits, I don't see that happening.
I mean, the, the other thing I think about getting, getting this out the door also is to. I, I don't think we want to create a checklist that's too big here for the select board. I, I.
That's a good point, Malcolm.
Not that they, they aren't smart people that have good attention spans, but, uh. In my experience, we give them three things, that's three things to, to consider. Um, yeah, maybe next week, next time we give them three more things to consider, but, uh, if we give them a dozen things to consider, they won't consider anything.
If you like this, we got three more.
Yeah, there might be something to that.
Yeah, this is, this should neither be, uh, uh, considered a full list. Uh, nor should it be, uh, some sort of criticism that town hasn't, you know, done anything.
No, there's a lot going on.
There's a lot going on and this, these are more things. There may be three more next week.
All right, can we send it as is with the Jonathan's, uh, edits that Chris has already incorporated?
Um, do we need a motion?
Do we want to see if, I, I cannot see when we're sharing if anybody's got their hand raised. Uh, can you see, Chris, if anyone out in the public has their, uh.
No, I can tell.
Uh, Eileen raised her hand.
Let's see, I have to. Get to the. All right, Eileen, go ahead.
Okay. I see some rather minor, um, phrasing, radical. Is it okay if I send them to Chris who might or might not pay attention to them?
Pay attention to them.
It doesn't change the intent of, of any item.
Yeah, that's fine, Eileen.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
I'll do it tomorrow.
Okay.
At some point tomorrow.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, so if we had a motion then to. Submit this letter substantially in the form that it's in currently, subject to, you know. Minor edits that don't change the intent. Um, is anyone willing to make that motion?
I'll second.
Okay, so Jonathan moved and Malcolm seconded. Do we have any further discussion? Okay, Jonathan, what's your vote? Pedro, what's your vote? Malcolm, what's your vote?
Hi.
Jeremy, what's your vote?
Hi.
And I'll vote, I also. All right, so Chris will get that out in the next couple of days.
Yep, finally, do you have your hand back up? Go ahead.
Nope, she put her hand down.
Okay.
Okay, and we'll keep a running list of these other items. I, I think Malcolm makes a good point. We don't want to overwhelm anybody with the. Fire hose of issues and ideas, even though, you know, we'll, we'll try and make steady stepwise progress.
So, one of the things we mentioned, we've mentioned a bunch of things tonight that we're going to consider downstream. And one of them was going through the bylaws and identifying, maybe coming up with a checklist for our own use. That says, okay, here's where a site plan review is required. And so then that can give us a checklist of going down, so we don't have to review the whole document, the whole bylaw every time we have this discussion. Um, so if, if, if that would be helpful, I'll volunteer to try to prepare something like that for the, for the next meeting.
You, you should be, do you ever use Ecode three sixteen for looking at, yeah, so you should be able to just search for site plan and it will highlight it?
Yeah. But I mean, I, 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 I think it would be good if we had one page. Okay, here are all the bylaw, uh, the, uh, sections in the bylaw. You know, it wasn't until we started this discussion that I realized how few, uh, sections in the bylaw require, uh, you know, residential, uh. Uh, projects to require site plan review and that is, uh, that was instructive to me. So I think just seeing all these things laid out would be useful.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thanks.
Um, Chris, was there anything else under financial strategy, staff capacity issues that you wanted to cover at this point in time?
No, I, I think it was, it was the letter and, um.
That was the only actionable item we had, right?
Right.
Okay.
We can keep that on the, you know, that, that general item on the agenda and flesh it out next time or whatever meeting makes sense.
Yeah.
It might include a sub item about driveways or.
Yeah.
It, you know, the short-term rental, uh, issue we're talking about, so. We can, we can keep that on, talk to you and Pedro about doing that.
Jonathan, if you have some specific thoughts on approach to driveways, are you willing to put that together and send it out since you've spent. So much time giving it thought?
Uh, sure, sure.
So that if we want to make a more specific recommendation, got a framework for it.
And, uh, Pedro was going to send his performance standard thoughts, so.
Be, should be in your inboxes.
Oh, great.
Think, I think you've got the agenda written for the next meeting, Chris. Okay, so there's nothing else on item number four, we'll move on to item five, board and subcommittee updates, issues and concerns. Anyone, let's see, Pedro, how about for you, any board, subcommittee updates, issues and concerns?
I just have a, a couple of comments. One is kind of, um, good criticism maybe, but. I wonder if I can make a request that, um, the documents that we receive for review are the same ones that we review in the meeting. It's happened to me a couple of times, it happened again today where the, the draft that. Chris sent us, my draft didn't have the original language stricken out or anything like that, so I didn't know. Or, you know, if you remember when we were discussing the. Site plan review and a couple of things, I got kind of confused because what I was looking at was different than what was on the screen, so.
I think respectfully, that's a function of your Word program, same with Jonathan. So what I'll do next time is. Can you ask my redline version? Because I think if your, if your reviewing option isn't checked in Microsoft Word, it's not going to show the comments.
So. That could be the case because I, I normally don't view those in Word anyway.
Yeah, Apple products don't always show those, Chris. So I think you're, thank you, if you're willing to send a PDF also, I think that. Removes some of the, the error we may see just due to inconsistencies in programs.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, I have the same thing too. And it's, I think it's Apple.
If you review it on your phone also, because sometimes I review things, you don't get any of the markup, so.
That's the last time you'll be able to use the excuse that you.
Be forewarned. Pedro, was there anything else?
Yes, I have a couple of, um, you guys know that I'm always kind of thinking probably too much about a lot of this stuff. But it, it really kind of struck me the other day. I was reading some article and, and. It struck me that, uh, most of these articles that I read about housing and they talk about a housing shortage. I'm, you know, we're reading those in the context of bigger cities or bigger towns. That actually have homelessness in their towns, right? And so I started thinking about, well, we don't have homelessness. We do have affordability issues here, but we don't have homelessness, so. We do have.
We do have.
Yep, I know, well. I have spoken with, with June Wolf about it and, and you're right, we do have. It's just not to the degree that, that, um. That we're seeing and, and, uh, in, in the bigger cities and in all these articles that I'm reading. It's just the context. You're absolutely right. We do have. We do have those issues.
Maybe we just need a be, a beach or, uh, a highway overpass.
Right. So, no, but you know what June says, actually, you think, I'm glad you, you did, it just, uh, came back to me, you know, June. She knows plenty of people that are shacking up in the woods.
Yeah.
Because they can, but anyway, the, it just struck me, and I don't know if you guys agree with this or not, that, that, uh, we, the affordability problem is serious. But it's just as serious, in my opinion, or at least the way I'm thinking about this today, as a housing variety problem. Right? So if we can think, when we're thinking through these things, I think if we think about, and Chris kind of alluded to it with the, um, article he sent us today. Or a couple of days ago, a missing middle. That we, you know, if we can. That we, you know, if we can brainstorm and think about all of the, you know, the different types of housing that we're missing, you know? It's multifamily, but what kind of multifamily? Okay, like, we're not missing multifamily luxury housing and we have some and some multifamily sort of low-income housing that middle housing is missing. Two-family, three-family structures, um, anyway, I just got to thinking that it, that housing variety is just as important to think for what we're going, what we go through here, I think, than all the other issues that we face. Um, a couple, just a couple of different things. I don't wanna lose the the trend of the subject that I brought up last week about, um, different types of how, of habitation. And how we should think about, you know, codifying that, especially now since we're, um, identifying dwellings as specifically something that has a kitchen and a bath. Um, and then the last item is, as I was reviewing all this stuff this week, a couple of things in the multifamily section, um, just kind of drew my attention to, to sort of open space provision in there, uh, made me think about some things and just also about where, looking at the, um, the table of, the table of uses and where multifamily is allowed, it just kind of made me think about the, the map of the town in general and how we can maybe, uh, shape that multifamily section to encourage development in places that are already built up. Right? Cause if you have multifamily, you've got more people living there, which raises the possibility for many things, for public transportation, for other types of development. So I'm, I'm hoping maybe we can have a discussion about a couple of things in the multifamily in the, in some upcoming meetings. I hope you guys will consider that. That's it.
You're the co-chair now, so you should be
Yeah, I know, but it's I feel like I'm, but I feel
Or the vice chair or whatever. I don't know if I'm gonna
Nice try.
Keep bringing all of these, these, uh, these things up and, and just as we're always saying, the select board has limited bandwidth. I think we have our limits too and I you know, my, um, my mind is always running and this is my field, you know, so I'm always thinking about this stuff all the time. And I've got people calling me asking about the stuff all the time, so.
I think, you know, I'm proud of this group for always like thinking of the code as like a dynamic document and trying to tweak it to make it more perfect. I think that's awesome. I, I do think we have a few things in the hopper from last time that we haven't pushed all the way across the finish line yet. So we should, you know, make a, a judgment there on, um, what were we calling it? The B2X, uh, B2X, right? The Stockbridge Road?
It was the
Not B2X, it was, uh,
He, it was B something, B?
Mixed, I don't know. Yeah, it wasn't B2X.
Oh, was it like a mix hot or something?
Expanding the B2X up Stockbridge Road. That's where we landed on that.
Anyway, so I don't wanna to like let all the energy that went into that die either, so. Um, Malcolm, how about for you?
Uh, nothing yet.
Okay. Jonathan?
No, I've got
No updates from the housing committee?
Uh, no.
Jeremy?
No, um, I guess, uh, CPC, I, I've mentioned this last time, I think, but, uh, or maybe not. Our next meeting is, uh, Tuesday, the 23rd. And, um, but, oh my gosh, my mind is, but Chris, we didn't even set the public hearing yet for the, did we? For the, um, for the CPA plan?
Don't think so.
Yeah. So I, I guess, yeah, so that's probably what we'll do at that meeting, that, and hopefully we'll have all of our members, um, and we'll re, um, reorganize, cause we didn't get that done the last
Okay, all right. So you guys haven't set new priorities yet or anything like that?
Right. Well, we talked, we talked about the plan, um, which is sort of the priorities or talking about the priorities for the cycle, but, um, but we didn't, we didn't finish that up and which, the finishing of that up is usually setting the public hearing and then, um, and then also setting the step and setting the deadlines for step one and step two applications.
Okay. Excellent, thank you. Um, and, uh, Lake Mansfield Improvement Task Force has sort of been, um, taking the summer off. And we are going to start meeting again, uh, August 30th, I think, is our meeting. Did we set a time for that, Chris?
I said five o'clock.
Five o'clock, okay. Um, just to talk about, uh, where we are in the design process. But, uh, nothing, nothing earth-shattering happening there.
Well, the geese.
Yes, I know, the geese, but what can we do about them?
Can you tell the rest of us and the public and the, uh, attendees about the geese? I don't know what's happening.
There's a big controversy. I'm not on the Hill list, sir, so I don't get the full, the full brunt of the controversy, but, um, there is a family of geese that has moved on to the beach at Lake Mansfield and they, um, someone wrote a piece, I think it was in The Edge recently about how the geese were her, they, they characterize them just as a family who is harassing other beachgoers and, and then the part about, and pooped on the beach. And when I went, pooped on the beach, who would do that? And then it's like, those geese, you know, ah, okay. So, um, yeah, so there's a little bit of wildlife management that may need to happen there.
Well, it's one family that fits in with all the other families.
Anyway, so, um, yeah, but nothing, nothing else to report there. Um, so Chris, Town Planner's report?
Uh, nothing too earth-shattering. Um, we'll mention that the Parks Commission has put out a brief survey that you can access on the website or it may have been shared in the media, um, a survey about, you know, how people use, uh, Great Barrington's parks and what, what improvements they see as necessary. So please take some time to look at that. That'll help the Parks Commission. I'm sure it can be included into the CPA CPC's priorities for funding, et cetera, so. Uh, and I think that would be it for tonight.
Okay, great. Um, do you have any sense if, if and when we're gonna see the, uh, affordable housing? There was that, uh, open house tonight. It, I, I stopped by for a few minutes and it was, seemed like it was more of a presentation than kind of like a stop-in, look at the plan. Um, it seemed a little bit more of like a, an organized presentation and I unfortunately did not have time to stay because this meeting was starting. But, um, do you have any sense of the timing overall there?
I don't, and maybe it'll be partially dependent on how things went tonight. I, I don't know.
Okay. Great. Um, and if you all have not driven past Guido's lately down towards Brookside Road, you should head south in town and just see the progress of, is it Windrush Commons? Is that what they're calling it?
I mean, the housing site just passed Guido's?
Yeah.
Yeah, 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 it's impressive.
Looking pretty good. It's moving pretty, moving along. Um, okay, thanks, Chris. Um, so next item on our agenda is citizens speak time. Uh, any citizens wishing to speak, please raise your hand. I see we've got four folks still with us. Chris can unmute you if you raise your hand. All right, hearing no citizens, seeing no hands raised, we'll adjourn at eight nineteen.
Thanks, six o'clock next time.
Six o'clock next time. Thank you.